Good morning. Hi.
Good morning.
And a few things to say before we get underway. And for our folks who normally join us for the early service and the later services, this is when we do the announcements. So, a couple of things. First, practical things for this morning. The name tags got printed on the wrong side. So, that's why they're out. So, if you're seeing people you don't know, well, this is the moment to make a friend. And when it comes to the exchange of the piece, introduce yourselves to one another. They should do that, okay? For the folks who are joining us online this morning want to let you know that we live in livestreaming the town hall as well. And I'll say a little bit more about how communications during the town hall will work when we get to that part of things. And for you all to know that at the end of service today, we'll have about a 10-minute break where folks to get up, stretch your legs, go to the bathroom, get a glass of water, and then we'll come back in for the meeting. And Connie will be, and Kip will be with our kids for Sunday School and Nursery during that time. So, a couple of things coming up that I want to mention to you all. And the first is, I think most of you are aware that a week ago Saturday, Mother Nancy's husband Dick died. He was at home, peacefully asleep in the morning. And we have the service for Dick planned for this Friday at 2:00 PM here at St. Albans, and there'll be a reception following. And so, all of you are welcome to come and be with Mother Nancy and all of us as we remember and celebrate Dick's life and commend him to God. Where is Betsy? There you are. Keep Betsy coming up. Betsy has a word for us.
So, your stewardship-
Wait, come up, all the way up. Look at the camera so folks can see and hear you.
Your stewardship team sponsors this intergenerational talent show every year to give you the opportunity to share your talent. So, I hope you're working on it. And during luncheon today, I'll be walking around with my clipboard and signing you up in case you missed the sign-up sheet, which is on the bulletin board out there.
And when is it?
The 20th.
The 20th? Yes. I don't know. And you know that I have traditional talents, right? It doesn't have to be a traditional talent.
No, it can be a very shaky talent, because there are no tryouts, and we accept it anyway. Okay, all ages. And I have some special things planned. I'm gonna bring my steel drum here. So, we usually have a chorus line, and the deciding factor would be, what are we gonna sing? Mostly depends on what you can find on the internet that we follow. So, I'll see you later.
All right. So, that's Friday, the 20th. We start at 6:30 with some light refreshment and time together, and then the show itself gets underway at 7:00 PM. All right. I think those are the things I wanted. Oh, this week in the office, a couple of things to know. The office will be closed Monday and Wednesday. Monday tomorrow because of the holiday. Wednesday because there's a planned power outage in this neighborhood from PGN because of the replacing of the power line. So, we don't expect to have power on Wednesday. The other thing you need to know is I am on call for jury duty this week. I'm on standby for that. I don't have to go in tomorrow, but I do on Tuesday probably. So, I will do what I can, and it'll all come together. So, with that, I invite you to stand as you are able for opening hymn 518 and the blue hymnal in front of you. The portion continues at the bottom of page 3, Reverend Volton. This is the day which the Lord has made-
Let us joyous and gladly be!
Almighty God, to whom all hearts are open, all desires known, and from whom no secrets are hidden, cleanse the thoughts of our hearts by the inspiration of your Holy Spirit, so that we truly love you and really praise your holy name, your Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Hear the teaching of Christ, a new commandment I give to you, that you love one another, as I have loved you.
Spirit of God, search our hearts.
God has promised forgiveness to all who truly repent, turn to Christ in faith, and are themselves forgiving. In silence, we call to mind our sins. Let us confess our sins. Merciful-
Hallelujah! We have sinned in what we have thought and said, in the wrong we have done, and in the good we have not done. We have sinned in ignorance, we have sinned in weakness, we have sinned through our own deliberate fault. We are to be repaid. We repent and turn to you. For forgive us for our Savior, Christ's sake, and renew our lives to the glory of thy warning. Amen.
To the cross of Christ, God have mercy on you, pardon you, and set you free. Know the order of forgiveness and be at peace. God strengthen you in all goodness, and keep you in life eternal. Amen. Please stand.
The heavens declare the glory of God, and the firmament shows his hand to work. One day he tells his tale to another, and one night he parts knowledge to another. Although they have the words or language, and their voices are not heard, their sound is not heard to all men, and their message to the ends of the world. In the deep has he sent a billion for the son; it comes forth like a bridegroom out of his chamber; it rejoices like his champion to run his horse; it goes forth from the uttermost edge of the heavens and runs about to the end of it again, and they are hidden from its burning heat. The law of the Lord is current and reminds the soul; the testimony of the Lord is sure and his wisdom to be his sent; the statutes of the Lord are just and rejoice the heart; the commandments of the Lord is clear and his light to be seen. The fear of the Lord is clean and dures for a member; the judgments of the Lord are true and righteous altogether; more to be desired early and gone, sweeter more than honey, than honey in the cloth. I am also his servant and my tab, and in keeping them there is a reward; who can tell how often he offends? Let speak from my secret voice. Above all, keep your servant from presumptuous sins; let them not give dominion over me; then shall I be whole and sound and innocent of great offense. Let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in your sight, O your mighty strength and my redeemer.
A reading from Paul's letter to the Philippians. If anyone else has reason to be confident in the flesh, I have more. Circumcised on the eighth day, a member of the people of Israel, of the tribe of Benjamin, a Hebrew born of Hebrews, as to the law, a Pharisee; as to zeal, a persecutor of the church; as to righteousness under the law, blameless. Yet whatever gains I had, these I have come to regard as loss because of Christ. More than that, I regard everything as loss because of the surpassing value of knowing Christ Jesus my Lord. For his sake I have suffered the loss of all things, and I regard them as rubbish, in order that I may gain Christ and be found in him, not having a righteousness of my own that comes from the law, but one that comes through faith in Christ, the righteousness from God based on faith. I want to know Christ and the power of his resurrection and the sharing of his sufferings by becoming like him in his death, if somehow I may attain the resurrection from the dead. Not that I have already obtained this or have already reached the goal, but I press on to make up my own because Christ Jesus has made me his own. Beloved, I do not consider that I have made it my own, but this one thing I do: forgetting what lies behind and straying forward to what lies ahead. I press on toward the goal for the prize of the heavenly call of God in Jesus Christ. Hear what the Spirit is saying to the church.
Praise you God!
The Gospel hymn 495. Please stand as you are able.
Hail thou that is wise in Jesus, hail thou that will be in thee; thou is suffered to be Jesus, thou is praised to the vision bring. Hail thou that is your Savior, ever of our sin and sinning; thy name is with thy name; thy will is given through thy name. As though my heart avails all our sins are lived away; thy almighty love alates hath full atonement there. All my evil are forgiven through the virtue of my love. All will dish the deed of hell in glory there forever to abide. All the heavenly host adoreth seated at thy Father's side; ever still as thou art leaning, ever thus our ways be bare; ever for us winter see till in glory we abide. Worship of her power and blessing, thou art worthy to be seen; thy presence with fancy see, thy deeds is for us to bear; help we right our jealous spirits, all your lotus spread the trees; help to sing our Savior's praises, help to chant the hymn of praise.
This is the Holy Gospel according to Matthew.
Praise the Lord, Jesus Christ.
Jesus said, "Listen to another parable." There was a landowner who planted a vineyard, put a fence around it, dug a winepress in it, and built a watchtower. Then he leased it to tenants and went to another country. When the harvest time had come, he sent his slaves to the tenant to collect his produce; but the tenants seized his slaves and beat one, killed another, and stoned another. Again he sent other slaves, more than the first, and they treated them in the same way. Finally he sent his son to them, saying, "They will respect my son." But when the tenants saw the son, they said to themselves, "This is the heir. Come, let us kill him and get his inheritance." So they seized him, threw him out of the vineyard, and killed him. Now when the owner of the vineyard comes, what will he do to those tenants? They said to him, "He will put those wretches to a miserable death and lease the vineyard to other tenants who will give him the produce at the harvest time." Jesus said to them, "Have you never read the Scriptures? The stone that the builders rejected has become the cornerstone? This was the Lord's doing, and it is amazing in our eyes. Therefore I tell you, the kingdom of God will be taken away from you and given to a people that produces the fruits of the kingdom. The one who falls on this stone will be broken to pieces, and it will crush anyone on whom it falls." When the chief priests and the Pharisees heard this, his parable, they realized that he was speaking about them. They wanted to arrest him, but they feared the crowds because they regarded him as a prophet. This is the Gospel of Christ.
Praise the Lord, Jesus Christ.
May the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in your sight, O Lord, my strength and my dominion. Please be seated. Good morning. What kind of community do we want to be? What kind of community do we want to be? So this morning, as we are making our way through Exodus and the journey that those ancient Israelites have, some things have happened on that journey since they have left slavery in Egypt and crossed the Red Sea. We've had a few times of being concerned about water, bitter water, and a lack of water and food, and learning whether they can trust this God that they are following out of slavery into wilderness. And about three months into their journey, they come to Mount Sinai and come to this story where Moses has ascended to the mountain and then returns with what we know as the Ten Commandments. And the commandments that are given to Moses for this people partly are sort of an outward expression of the relationship that they have with God. And what's interesting, well, there are a number of things interesting about this, but you'll notice that the commandments that are given have two dimensions to them. There's a dimension of how they are to relate to God, and then there's a dimension of how they are to relate to everybody else. Because God could have stopped with just the, "Don't make any graven images. Don't worship other gods besides me. Don't take my name in vain," and called it good, right? But God did not. God went on to say things about family, marriage, and neighbors, and property, and work, and time. God had things to say about not just their relationship to God, but to the people around them. And so, at least for that moment, those commandments, those laws given to the people will shape the kind of community they are to be. They mark the community as distinct from other people, and they are intended to safeguard the integrity of that community. And you'll note that the passage ends with this exhortation from Moses, "Not to be afraid. Not to be afraid." What is happening, the laws are meant to keep them from sin. They are, "Not to be afraid." Now, when we fast forward many generations to Jesus's time, we find the descendants of that earlier community in a precarious situation. They're not slaves as they were in Egypt, but they are occupied people under the Romans. They are, in the words of theologian Howard Thurman, "A people with their back against the wall." And for folks who are unfamiliar with Thurman, one of his masterpieces is a very thin little law you call "Jesus and the Disinherited." And what he says in that is that for people who have their backs against the wall, he wrote this in the 1930s. So he's thinking particularly of African-American folk, but not only, native people, immigrants, all kinds of folks, people who have their back against the wall. The fundamental question they have to ask is, "What is my relationship going to be to the powers that be? What will my attitude be toward them?" Before you can figure out anything else in your life, you have to answer that fundamental question. How are you going to relate? What is your attitude toward the people who control political, social, and economic life? And he notes in Jesus's time that the Jewish community takes different, different folks within the Jewish community take different paths. One path is the path of active resistance, which we know of from the group of folks who are known as the zealots. They're going to actively resist Rome. And he notes that that has a particular appeal because it forces the powers that be to deal with you and your consorts even if it is just to try to suppress them. I'm going to let you all make some connections between that and things that are happening currently in our world. But he notes that one path is to actively resist the powers that be, with force. The other is a path of non-resistance, and even that has a couple of different ways that that can go. One is that of assimilation, which in terms of the folks described in the Gospels, the Sadducees, who are the religious elite, are probably the best example. So of assimilation, and they're not going to probably challenge the status quo because that actually challenges the position, the somewhat privileged position they have even as an occupied people within the system. Another is that of withdrawal. We have as little to do with the powers that be as we have to. We may brew and steam with resentment about our situation, but we simply withdraw as much as possible, and that is really the role of the Pharisees in the Gospels. Now, this passage and this very challenging parable that Jesus told ends by noting that the chief priests drive from the Sadducees, and the Pharisees discern that the parable and the one previous to it are told against them. And it says they act with fear. They don't do anything about the fact that Jesus has told this parable against them because they fear the crowds. So fear is at play, but not fear of God. And what Thurman notes as he unpacks this is that Jesus offers the folks a different way forward. Not withdrawal, not assimilation, and not violent resistance. He offers a different way forward. Now, if we were to continue a little bit farther on in Matthew's Gospel, there's a whole chapter, chapter 23, where basically Jesus completely lambasts the Pharisees, describes the religious authorities of his time. Woe after woe after woe to them. And I need us for a moment to pause and say that when we come across those Scriptures, they sound anti-Semitic to our modern ears, and it is right and appropriate for us to pay attention to that, to understand how those Scriptures may land in the ears and the hearts of our Jewish brothers and sisters and other Christians, how those are going to land. But the heart of what Jesus is getting at in here and going through chapter 23 with all those things he has to say is the issue of hypocrisy that describes in Pharisees, the chief priests, they teach one thing and they do something different. He will go on to say, "They sit on Moses's seat, so do what they teach, but do not do what they do." His primary concern is that of hypocrisy and that they lay heavy burdens on the people. It isn't enough to have the Ten Commandments, to shape and form their community. We have to get a lot more intricate and involved, and we have this whole elaborate system around worship, da-da-da, that didn't used to exist, and it is a heavy burden and it is hypocritical. They teach one thing and they do something else. And as somebody I talked to this week noted that if the people are not trusting their leaders because of the hypocrisy, everybody's anxiety just goes up when the folks cannot trust their leaders, political, religious, or otherwise. So the path that gets articulated by Jesus about how they go forward, not withdrawal, not assimilation, not violent overthrow, but it's still that one of integrity where the inside and the outside match. The inside and the outside match, where the rules, so to speak, are the same for everybody. Not hypocrisy, but this piece where inside and outside match, and the rules are the same for everybody regardless of position. And so it is no wonder that right before this, the people have greeted Jesus with adulation, saying, "Kazanah, save us." Jesus's message boils down to the kingdom of God is within, and Thurman, he puts it in this very short piece that it boils down to this, "You must abandon your fear of each other and fear only God. You must not engage in any deception or dishonesty, even to save your life. Your words must be yea, nay; anything else is evil. Hatred is destructive to hater and hated alike; love your enemy that you may be children of your father, who is in heaven." Fear God alone. That was that end of the Exodus passage. And as we heard here, there is fear, but it is not of God, it is of other people. Fear God alone; that your word be yea and nay; do not engage in deception or dishonesty. Thurman puts it in another place a little bit differently. He says where it's the profound recognition and this sounds simple, but it's actually much more profound than we might appreciate. It is to recognize oneself as a child of God and everyone else know more and know less. Know more and know less. Which means we don't give people privilege for the reasons we normally think they should have privilege, nor do we disabuse people for the reasons we think it's okay to disabuse them. You are a child of God and worthy of that divinity, and so are the people around you know more and know less. So, I asked you at the outset, what kind of a community do we want to be? What kind of a community do we want to create together? Do you have those? And what happens when somebody violates them? Is there a forgiveness? Is there a path back to restoration? Is there accountability? Continuing to come out of the pandemic is not like leaving behind that legacy of slavery or even living under occupation, but I do have this sense that we are in that moment of redefining who are we? What kind of a community are we called to be? And do the things that we do line up with our internal commitments individually and as a community? Later this morning when we get underway with the town hall, you're going to hear some things from our creation care team about some of the work that they have done, and one of the passes do keep ups. And the one that we have, and the ones that might be coming, and so on and so forth. And I'll tell you, I have moments where I think, "Oh, in the grand scheme of things, what difference is this going to make?" And then comes the challenge of integrity that says, "If I believe, if we believe the things that we say, the earth is the Lord's and all that is in it, every creature on this planet is made by and loved by God and has an integrity and a worth of its own, as well as the rest of the people on the planet, then we're going to take every opportunity we have to do something about that, to ensure their well-being." It actually goes back to that very old story in Genesis, that the first job given to a human being was to take fire in the garden. It's an ancient vocation. Another way of saying it is to not be guilty of the sin of hypocrisy. That way of integrity can be incredibly hard. Jesus says to us, "Are you going to save your life for the sake of the gospel or not?" He asks us some profoundly challenging and difficult things, but it is the way. It is not a way of just assimilating and getting what I can and being okay with that, nor is it a way of just simply withdrawing from everything, nor that violent resistance. And here's the thing that I think is important to know. Sometimes, sometimes we're going to be the Pharisee, the Sadducee, the zealot, the whatever. And when we get to that long section in chapter 23 where Jesus scolds and has such hard things to say to the Pharisees and to the other religious leaders, it ends with a lament. It ends with a lament over Jerusalem. "Oh, Jerusalem, Jerusalem, who kills the prophets that thou sent to you? How I would have gathered you like a hen gathers her chicks, but you would not have." In other words, as angry and frustrated as Jesus is with them, What kind of a community are we going to be? We exercise what God has given us to be the community that God has called us to be. Amen.
I invite you to stand and to affirm our faith in the words of the Nice Lord. We believe in one God, the Father Almighty, the Nether and the Ender, of all that is seen and unseen. We believe in one Lord, Jesus Christ, the only Son of God, eternally God and the Father, God from God, light from light, true God from true God, begotten not made, of one being with Father; through him all things were made. For us and for our salvation, he came down from heaven, was incarnate from the Holy Spirit and the virgin Mary, and became fully human. For our sake he was resuscitated and rebaptised. He suffered death and wearied; on the third day he rose again and began to worship the scriptures. He ascended into heaven and is still at the right hand of the Father. He will command and glorify his judgment, believing in the dead, and his kingdom will have no end. We believe in the Holy Spirit, the Lord who gave our life, who proceeds from the Father and the Son, who in the unity of the Father and the Son, his worship became glorified and has spoken through the prophets. We believe in one holy and active apostolic church. We acknowledge your baptism for forgiveness of sins. We look for the resurrection of the dead and the life of the world to come. Amen. Let us pray for the church and for the world, giving thanks for God's goodness.
Heavenly Father, you have promised to hear when we pray in the name of your son. Therefore, in confidence and trust, we pray for the church. We pray for the congregations of our deering this month for the people of Christchurch, Eureka, as they reflect on what they learned during their recent Sabbath season and discern what God is now calling them to be. We pray especially for all those who are participating in their new joy mass family service, that they all may grow closer to Christ, who makes our joy complete.
Pray for Earl and Kenzie, who are being confirmed this morning at St. Francis. We pray especially for the presence of the church in the home and land and its worship in that place. We pray for all people, and we give thanks for this place in which we live.
Father, enlighten the church for its mission.
That we may be salt for the earth and light to the world.
Grieve fresh life into your people.
Give us power to reveal Christ in your word and in action.
We pray for the world. Creator of all, lead us and every people into ways of justice and peace.
That we may respect one another in freedom and in truth.
Awaken in us a sense of wonder for the earth and all that is in it.
Teach us to dare creatively for the resources.
We pray for the community.
Our skinhouse partnership.
God of truth, inspire with your wisdom those whose decisions affect the lives of others.
That all may act with integrity and courage.
Give grace to all those whose lives are linked with ours.
May we serve Christ in one another and love as one God.
We pray for those in need, especially Janet, the Ann Mansfield and family, Ann Moorhead, the people of the Middle East, Wally Cooper, Marie, Kimberly Cooper, and Debbie and Chow. We pray for the following members of the arch forces from the families of this congregation: Ian Hibbert, Melanie Loxon, Matt Snuel, Ryan Ordongues, Dylan Ortler, Robert Spooner, and Gianna Ventosa. Please add your own intercessions, either silently or aloud. God of hope, comfort and restore all who suffer in body, mind, or spirit.
May they know the power of your healing love.
Make us willing agents of your compassion.
Strengthen us as we share in making people whole.
We remember those who have died and those who mourn, especially Dick Struford. We remember with thanksgiving those who have died in faith and practice, and those whose faith is known to you alone.
Father, deliver us from heaven.
Give comfort to those who mourn.
Bring them peace in their time of loss.
We praise you for all your saints who have entered your eternal glory.
Make their examples higher and further to us.
We offer our thanksgivings, especially for the great apple harvest. We pray, excuse me, we pray for ourselves and our ministries. Pause for particular intercessions, and particular, offer your thanksgivings aloud this morning.
In thanksgiving for John's successful surgery, Earl is waiting to continue healing and recovery.
Thankful for the wonderful food that awaits us.
Thanksgiving for our community.
Lord, you have called us to serve you.
Amen. That you give love in your presence, your love in our hearts, your truth in our minds, your strength in our wills, and until at the end of our journey, we know the joy of our homecoming and the welcome of your grace, through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Those things good Lord that your servants have prayed for, give us grace to work for. And in the purpose of your love, answer our prayers and fulfill our hopes for Jesus to say.
Amen.
Before I might exchange the peace, just a reminder to introduce yourselves to people who don't know. The peace of Christ be always with you.
And also with you.
My name is Liam.
Liam. Hi, Carolyn. Please.
This is Jack.
This is Liam. And Jack.
Liam, we wanted to hear you this week.
So.
Okay.
Peace be with you.
I don't wanna bump this thing. I've gotten the wrong spot. Here, I'm gonna carefully come out here.
Hi, Carolyn, I'm Bee. Your color's. Orange. Peace, Carolyn. Oh, gosh, I remember. Hi, peace be with you. I'm Bee.
Peace be with you. I'm Lord.
Peace be with you.
Peace be with you.
Of strep, yes.
With you, Walt.
Friends, if you would turn to the top of page 14. Brothers and sisters, we are the body of Christ.
By one spirit, we were baptized into one body.
Keep the unity of the spirit and the bond of peace.
Amen. We are bound by the love of Christ.
We are bound by the love of Christ. And you all love relish when I forget this and don't do it in life or not, and we would tell you that times are tough. Are there birthdays or anniversaries to be remembered this week?
A dear for birthday blessing.
Okay. For Wally, okay.
Returns.
Sixty-seven today.
He says he's having a baby.
Yes. And he's watching.
And he's watching. All right, so that we can.
They better do it well.
Janet, are you coming up for an anniversary blessing for your child?
Sure.
So we will begin by doing the birthday prayer for Wally. It's printed on page 14 of your bulletin. For Wally, who turns sixty-seven today, happy birthday, Wally. Watch over your child.
The Lord has his days increased. Bless and guide him wherever he may be. Strengthen him when he stands. Comfort him when he is discouraged or sorrowful. Raise him up when he falls. And in his heart may your peace with his past and understanding abide all the days of his life, through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen, and happy birthday. Happy birthday! All right. Janet, how many years are you and Chuck already?
Vinted.
Vinted, twenty. All right.
Just came from Spain, so still in that voice.
Without an anniversary trophy. And we are glad to have the timing, we are glad everyone's safe.
Me too.
So let us pray for Janet and Chuck. For God who so consecrated the covenant of marriage, that in it is represented the spiritual unity between Christ and this church. Send therefore your blessing upon your servants Janet and Chuck, that they may continue to love, honor, and cherish each other in faithfulness and patience, in wisdom and true godliness, that their home may be a haven of blessing and peace, through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen. Janet, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take a moment to note that we have Doug Moorhead and Earl with us this morning to look at the board of thanksgiving. Let us walk in love as Christ loved us, he gave himself for us in offering and sacrifice to God. Let us walk in love as Christ loved us, He gave Himself for us in offering and sacrifice to God. Amen. Amen. Blessed are you, God of all creation, for your goodness we have these gifts to share. Accept and use our offerings for your glory and for the service of your freedom.
Blessed be your honor forever.
The glory is here.
God's spirit is with us.
Lift up your hearts.
We lift them to the Lord.
Let us give thanks to the Lord our God.
It is right to offer thanks and praise.
It is right indeed, it is our joy and our salvation, holy Lord, almighty Father, everlasting God, at all times and in all places to give you thanks and praise through Christ your only Son. You are the source of all life and goodness. Through your eternal word, you created all things from the beginning and formed us in your own image, male and female, you created us. When we sinned and turned away, you called us back to yourself and gave your son to share human nature. By his death on the cross, he made the one perfect sacrifice for the sin of the world and freed us from the bondage of sin. You raised him to life triumphant over death. You exalted him in glory. In him you made us a holy people by sending upon us your holy and life-giving spirit. Therefore, with the faithful who rest in him, with angels and archangels and all the company of heaven, we proclaim your great and glorious name, forever praising you and saying,
Holy, holy, holy Lord, God of power and might, heaven and earth are full of your glory, O San and the Christ. Blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord, O San and the Christ.
All glory and thanksgiving to you, holy Father. On the night before he died for us, Jesus Christ, your son, Jesus Christ took bread. And when he gave me thanks, he broke it, gave it to his disciples, and said, "Take, eat. This is my body which is given for you. Do this for your members of thee." After supper, he took the cup, when he gave me thanks, he gave it to them and said, "Drink this all you, for this is my blood of the new covenant, which is shed for you and for many for the forgiveness of sins. Do this as often as you drink it to remember me."
Glory to you, Lord Christ. Your death we shall forth, your resurrection we proclaim, your coming we await. Amen. Come, Lord Jesus.
Therefore, loving God, we hope you bring goodness to us in Christ's suffering and death, his resurrection and ascension, and looking for his coming and glory. We celebrate our redemption with this bread of life and his cup of salvation. Accept our sacrifice of praise and thanksgiving, which we offer through Christ our great high priest. Send your Holy Spirit, that these gifts of bread and wine which we receive may be to us the body and blood of Christ, and that we, filled with the Spirit's grace and power, may be renewed for the service of your kingdom. United in Christ, God who stands before you in earth and heaven, we worship you, O God, in songs of everlasting praise.
Let the honor and glory be yours here and evermore, now and forever. Amen.
As Christ teaches us, we pray.
Our Father in heaven, how would be your name? Your kingdom come, your will be done. Honor as in heaven. Give us today our daily bread. Forgive us our sins, as we forgive those who sin against us. Save us from the time of trial, and deliver us from evil. For the kingdom, the power, and the glory be our doors, now and forever. Amen.
We break this bread to share in the body of Christ.
We who are named are one body, for we all share the one prayer.
Join there and receive the body and blood of our Savior Jesus Christ and remember to be done for us, by the feet on him and our hearts, by faith, for thanksgiving. Amen. Amen.
Thou didst give thyself to me. Thou didst give thyself to me. Thou didst give thyself for me. Thou didst give thyself to me. Thou didst give thyself to me. Thou didst give thyself to me. What thy monstrous love bore me. Thou didst give thyself for me. Thou didst give thyself to me.
Father God, we give you thanks and praise that when we were still far off, your medicine would suddenly draw us home. Die and living, he declared for God, gave us grace and opened the gate of the Lord. May we be shared Christ's body, live as risen life. We can drink this cup, bring life to others. We in the spirit lights, give light to the world.
He has burned in the hope you have set before us. So we in the altar shall be shone free. And all earth will bid to praise your name. Amen.
The peace of God, the passing all understanding, keep your hearts and minds in the knowledge and love of God. And the beside Jesus Christ our Lord. And the blessed you God, and light to the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be among you. And remain with you always. Amen.
So Jack is our university visitor today. And so please join together as we send Jack back.
In the name of Christ, in this congregation, we send you to the cell where you serve. There is a feast of bread and wine. And may they know that we who are many are one body. For we share in one breath and one cup. Amen.
Before Cindy dismisses us, I wanted to just remind folks that as soon as we conclude the final hymn and the concert begins, we'll have about a ten-minute break for folks to go to the bathroom, shut your legs, get a drink of water. And then when we back in here, that tells us that we finished. Please stand. Go now to love and serve the Lord. Go in peace.
Amen. You go in the name of Christ.
Our closing hymn is four hundred and forty-eight.
Oh, yeah.
The oldest ends.
I see, same with that.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is there something to pay attention to? Like Elena, maybe?
Dinner will be served over in the lounge.
Who's voting, they have ballots. I'd love to share your opinion.
It's gonna be very nice. She's not weird.
It felt like, yeah, a little much.
For sure.
I don't know, it's some kind of fun.
This is for your opinion that you get to share.
Red hot from the church.
But we do it all inside, like.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning!
At least what's left of it. Welcome you all here to our second town hall. I want to start off, everybody has the agenda. At the top of the agenda is the mission statement. Mission statement for the church. And please join me as we, we're excited together.
Bullet in the bulletin.
Yep, it's in the back of the bulletin.
Anybody got it?
Oh, the back of the bulletin, I see. That's a page in the back, Dan.
It's right here.
All right, here we go. St. Albans is a community that strives to grow into the full maturity of our faith. Our mission is to be a community where worship is central and is a central mission. Devoted to God, prayer, study, and action. Faithful and welcoming to the stranger and serving the needs of our parish and the altar. So, welcome again to this town hall. And those of you who are online, still there, Mother Sarah will have some things to say about that. So, without further ado, Mother Sarah.
So, for folks who are here, just a couple of housekeeping things before we begin. Again, the agenda is printed in the back of this morning's bulletin. And I think Dan was handing out some half slips that have some financial information for later. You should also have received a three by five card and something to write with. Is there anybody who did not and still needs that? Elena does, and Liz does, okay? So, here is a summary for folks. Okay, so, for the folks who are watching us online, Mother Nancy's cell phone number is up on the board here. And I'll just read it, it's unclear, seven oh seven, six seven two, three six three five. When we get to the presentations, at the end of each one, we'll take questions from the congregation. And then if folks online have a question, you can text it to Mother Nancy, and we'll address those questions at the end of the questions that are in-house, okay? So, good morning, as already said. This is what I would like you to do for just a moment with your three by five card and your writing utensil. I'm gonna ask you to respond to a question that I'm gonna ask in a moment. But here's the thing. At the end of today, I'm gonna gather up the cards, so please write legibly, so I can read them. I see somebody erasing already. You do not need to write your name on it, though you might. So, I'm gonna ask the question, and I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you to respond. And then, if you want, as we go through the rest of the meeting, if there are other things you wanna make comments on or their feedback, you can add it, and then I'll collect those all at the very end, okay? Here is my question. What do you value most about St. Albans? What do you value most about St. Albans? Only one thing. What do you value most about St. Albans?
Quite a crowd.
Right. I'm wondering if there are two, or two only, people who wanna share their answer. Who are willing to share their answer. Ellen Rocknett.
The fact that this church is so welcoming to people, welcome to all people.
One other person. Jenny.
I was thinking about this this morning, particularly if we have families that are far away, that there aren't too many places where you can be together with lots of different generations. And one of, and like, I didn't have a mom. And so, like, the older women in this church kinda show me how to be a woman, an aging woman. Yep.
So, for folks online, the first response was from Ellen Rocknett. And she said that this is a welcoming place, a welcome of all kinds of people. And Jenny's comment was about the intergenerational nature of the congregation. And the fact that when she came, she didn't have a mom, and women here, older women in this congregation, sort of became that, and also showed her, mothered her in the sense of helping her learn how to be a woman growing up gracefully. Gracefully. So, thank you. Probably next month's newsletter, some other point, I'm gonna take sort of the summation of what you say, so that you get a sense of what the whole looked like. But, thank you, Ellen, and thank you, Jenny. So, with that, just a reminder for folks who are online, the phone number up here is Mother Nancy's. And as the presentations go on, if you have a question, text your question to Mother Nancy, and we'll answer that at the end of each presentation, after we've taken any questions from the congregation here. All right, Rick?
Thank you, Mother Sarah. We have a very full agenda here, as everyone can see, and many interesting things to talk about. This is something I'm interested to hear, hear from Becky Price Hall and Reverend Cindy about the program for disaster preparedness. So, please.
Hi.
Hi.
So, as some of you may know, I'm really always kind of excited about disaster preparedness. So, in 2015, and I don't know if we've updated it after that, we developed this plan, which has, it's located in the office, and it has different sections about making sure the church is secure. And one piece that I was partially responsible was communications. And I, I'm, I don't know, I think in a lot of different directions. And so, I started in one direction on the communication plan, which included like a phone tree. But then I'm like, oh, that's not gonna work, because blah, blah, blah. Anyway, so it never quite got done. And we decided it might make sense to do it as more neighborhood-based. You know, like, from our experience in disasters, you're like closer to the people near you in terms of being able to get in touch with them if we don't have phones available, or power, whatever. And so, Cindy and I talked about it, and I think, I don't remember what the name of that meeting was, earlier this year. Where this idea kind of came from.
Well, it was an idea in my head that I shared with Garrett, I shared with you.
Okay, yeah, anyway, so, we were thinking, oh, how about, if we're doing this neighborhood idea, how about we have some dinners in neighborhoods hosted by somebody in the neighborhood of our, you know, sort of the church people in our, that are living in McKinleville or in Arcata, Bayside, Eureka. And so, this is just kind of a heads up, nothing's planned. But we wanna have a series of dinners where we kind of figure out, okay, and get to know each other. If there's an earthquake like the one last December, let's be a little more organized about making sure we're getting in touch with everybody, to make sure everyone is safe, has their needs met, whatever. And it kind of happened organically at the last earthquake. But we were sort of like, did you call, like, who's been called? And so, anyways, so we wanna just be a little more deliberate, update this, and have everybody understand, like, what happens if there's a big earthquake? How do we help each other? And, so, anyway.
Great. So, I, you know, I just love something that I can look at and kind of give us a better idea of what's out there, where you all live. Because you all know where you live, but I don't. So, here's a little map, and I hope you take a chance to take a look, have time to take a look at it. So, I chose the colors, you can't hardly see, but Trinidad is yellow, McKinleville is green, Arcata is red, Eureka is blue. And when you get closer to this, you can see that we're kind of got little clusters. And so, putting together these neighborhoods is gonna be really fun. It's gonna be exciting to find out who your neighbors are. And maybe you really don't know. Like, I didn't realize that Laura Miller lived so close to me. It's amazing. There, I looked up last night, and there she was. So, you'll see, and there's a lot of folks that actually, this is just a map, you know, the local region. It's not a detailed map, this is just a general idea to kind of help you see where you are. Some of the folks in McKinleville are off the map, okay, so they're not on this map. So, don't be sad, there's other maps. You'll get back on there. I know this is great over here somewhere. So, that's all. It's just important, again, just to emphasize that during the earthquake, I think it was Liz, and Becky, and Sarah, and I, and Patrick, we went out and checked on people. It was kind of fun, I mean, it was, it was fun, it was scary, it was all kind of all mixed up. But helping us get organized so that the people in McKinleville can kind of take care of each other. Eureka, then we can kind of have one central place where we call in, or text in, or communicate that everybody's doing okay. So, this is the goal. Now, we're gonna call it neighborhood dinners, we're not gonna call it disaster dinners. I had one of those one time. I was gonna tell you, but maybe I shouldn't have. But anyway, I fixed soup, I fixed barley soup. Have you all done that before, barley soup? Well, it was the first time I ever did barley soup. It was a disaster dinner, because we had a brick. We had a brick for dinner, because I put too much barley in it. So, we're not gonna have disaster, we're not gonna have disaster dinners, we're gonna have neighborhood dinners. And look forward to figuring out how that looks.
And then, I'll just add that when we're having these dinners, we might go, oh, but you know, like, if there was a disaster and a bridge fell down, what neighborhood, like, what, who can get to each other? And, and like, just like, be a neighbor. Like, I like to actually go to somebody's house.
And you won't have to go too far.
And, and, and there's, like, all different people have different things they wanna do. Like, some people would rather call or text, some people would rather hop on a bicycle, like Patrick. And so, anyway, the kids can help, whatever, it's something for everybody.
So, we're gonna figure it out. Thank you. That's great.
And that'll be fun.
Thank you for that. This is kind of old school stuff, going back to phone trees. Who needs computers? This is a topic, this next topic of Creation Care is one that seemed daunting to me at first in 2020, when I first got on the vestry. And one of the first things we took up was the Genesis coming. A commitment immediately to that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Daniel, but that was to reduce our carbon footprint by fifty percent in ten years? Wasn't that what it was?
Yeah.
I don't wanna steal Bob's thunder and Daniel's thunder here, but we are well on our way to being zero. Without further ado, gentlemen, I leave it to you.
One thing I just wanna really quickly is just remind everyone of all the successes that we've had over the years, and really thank everybody who's been on part of the Creation Care team, and everyone in the congregation that's helped support this. It all came about, really, as we did an outreach for what people cared about in this congregation. And one of the things that came on top of that survey we had done, this is four years ago now, maybe five, was Creation Care and caring for the Environment. And we kicked everything off by doing solar on the roof, which you can't see. Just imagine if you were to look through this roof right here. I wish it was on that side, so everybody could see it, as we all pull in the parking lot, but that's south, so we have to have it on that side. Maureen Johansson left a request to pay for that. And it's been. Maureen Johansson left a request to pay for that, and, and it's been kicking butt this whole time, giving us zero power bills. Our electricity bill is zero. What's not zero is our gas bill, and, and it can range upwards of five, six hundred dollars a month in winter. It's a lot less in summer, and some of the things we've done have, uh, reduced that, and, and we're gonna talk, we'll talk a little bit more about further reducing that to zero. We did solar. Redwood Coast Energy Authority has, gave us money for LED lights, and first it was in the, uh, the library, kitchen, and then the hall. Every single one of these bulbs is now, uh, LED. Every church in this, every bulb in this whole congregation is now LED, so it's, it's much more efficient. We have a new refrigerator, a, a new Energy Star refrigerator. Uh, we've worked on sealing up the ductwork, or the, the air pipes that kind of blow air into the, the different rooms. And we have an electric stove. Electric water heater. So I hope you're seeing this, the theme here is that we're removing our fossil fuel appliances and replacing them with electrics. We have this, this solar up here that's producing electric. Zero escaping, I think it was Saskia, you had helped with that, right?
Uh, it was Tina.
Tina, yeah, Tina, and you, and so you guys had volunteered your expertise as landscape, what is it?
Yeah.
Landscape architect? Thank you.
Landscape architecture, both of us, and, um, yeah, we, uh, did tree removal permit to get rid of that, um, big tree. Just redesigned the, the landscape, and also provided some additional hardscape and all of pathways to make the situation.
Yeah, the new sidewalk as well. Betsy, thank you for the bulletin board. If anyone has not seen the bulletin board, it's, it's kind of right there on the way to the bathrooms, but she, you've done a great job updating that regularly. What's up there right now? Cars?
Well, I'm ready to change it, I'm gonna change it. To ridding your house, one of the, um, one of the, uh, the goals of, of the National Church is not only to do your churches, but to allow that study of, of decreasing your, um, power that you're using in your church is to transfer to your home. So I'm going to do a study of what products we have available to get rid of using, um, plastics, and reusing the plastics that you have, and what kind of, like, personal cosmetics that you need to get that are in reasonably packaged.
So, the point here is, you've done a great job, thank you. And, and really, I'll just skip ahead, we were running out of-
Oh, I know, are they?
Go ahead, yeah.
Oh, I've had a heat pump in my house for three years, and, um, that's another thing that we are working on for all the rest of you to start thinking about, how are you gonna get some solar power and, and use the heat pumps? One thing I really like is that it's so smooth. It's not the kind of thing, like, you have to stand next to the gas, uh, stove to warm up. It just, I don't know, it's just strange, it just like spreads out, and the, how many of you are aware that today, we have heat pumps?
But, but Betsy, I think you're stealing his thunder.
No, she's not.
No, she's not.
She's not, Betsy shared.
You know, like, in the office, who has been in the office this morning? That, that office is presently being heated by heat pump. Did you notice it?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, and one, one key thing about a heat pump is that it's not burning a fossil fuel that we've somehow taken out of the earth far away and transported thousands of miles here, and then burning something. What we're doing is we're using electricity to actually move heat. It's not an electric furnace, it's not like a toaster coil that blows hot air, it's, we're actually taking, believe it or not, there was heat out there, even on the coldest day, where we can move heat from one place or to the other. So what that do is, is making the electricity work much more efficiently for us. So as Betsy mentioned, we already have some heat pumps in the office wing, uh, and while I may speak to this, we're gonna be move, we're gonna be replacing the furnace that heats this room, all of the rooms. It also cools. Now, anytime I tell people about heat pumps, I say, well, it also uses air conditioning, and everyone says, well, I'll never use that, we live in a humble, but as this climate is changing, um, it gets hot, and, and we'll, everyone's gonna be surprised as how well we can cool.
So how many people in the congregation that are right here have heat pumps right now? And who is going, planning on putting heat pumps in?
Every hand should. Saskia, did you have a question?
Daniel, I have a question for a second.
Yeah.
There's a little bit on time, and also, something seems to be repeated for the benefit of the folks who are listening.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, of course. Yeah, so, uh, Betsy had asked everyone online, um, who has heat pumps? Text Nancy. And, and if you plan on getting a, a heat pump, text Nancy as well.
And I know some are in the works.
And, and then, yeah, we have mentioned, she had mentioned about the bulletin board is gonna be on, uh, reducing plastics at home, and that's something that we're looking forward to, and we're running out of stuff to do here. And, and really, the next step is helping everybody here, um, make a difference at home as well. Saskia, really quickly, what?
Uh, just a quick comment about the landscaping, it's native landscaping, just to revisit the previous, it was spearheaded by Bob and Connie. They paid for, you know, permits and all of this, so I don't want to be taking the credit for, you know, that issue that came from them. But we now have all natives, no automated plants, no, uh, grass, uh, much more water, um, efficient.
Yeah.
And, um, also added trees, so, um, that increases the, you know, trees and cabin.
Yeah, so everyone online, um, what Saskia was mentioning is that not only is it zero escaping, which is, uh, less water, but also native plants as well, and, again, I can't emphasize this enough, to thank to Bob and Connie for all the work you guys have done, not just on that project, but every project. Without them, um, really, the Creation Care team wouldn't have been nearly as successful. Um, to finish up really quickly, another thing that me, you may not realize is that we've also worked on what's known as a mesh network. I don't know if everyone can see that little white box sitting right there, that's actually a, a Wi-Fi mesh network repeater, which as we're moving towards, uh, smart devices, and, and keeping these things working, um, a good, robust network in this church is, is possi- it needs to be possible. And it also allows us to live stream everybody, so, if anybody wants the password, um, it's five dollars. Uh, if we've since, uh, we've since worked on the, the National Church, the local diocese resolution now is, uh, moving forward, where in the next, uh, ten years, and I think we only have about nine left now, where we're gonna commit to be, uh, carbon neutral, which is a little different than net zero, and I don't wanna take up all the time explaining that, uh, but we're gonna be as close to net zero as possible. Uh, the new rector door, that was part of insulation, a lot more things to come, uh, heat pumps for the whole church, insulation, and again, we're gonna start helping everybody at home as well. Bob?
I have to get warmed up when I can stand up here. So I, you, most of you, I believe, have a hand, a handout that I gave you, and it has to do with what our plan is for this next, uh, starting any time, and it will continue into next year, and that's we're replacing all the gas furnaces that we have. We have four gas furnaces, they're old, none of them are working properly, they are sick. It has to be done, and we're replacing them with heat pumps. We've successfully done one of those already, uh, for the office wing. It is now operational entirely, except for the smart thermostat. We still have to have a third, that'll probably be put in when we start putting the others in, it'll have a smart thermostat. Our next step, uh, is to, and we've already applied for it, we have to get PG&E to give approval for us to upgrade our electric to four hundred amps. That means they have to look at their equipment to see if it is capable of handling, of providing that, and if not, they will provide the, they will put, install the equipment so it does. Typically, it is, yep, go ahead, but it takes at least three months for that bureaucracy to come around and give us the okay. So we are currently waiting on it. Soon as that is done, then we already have signed the contract to have the electrician upgrade our, uh, main, uh, panel, which is outside the sacristy here on the deck, to handle the four hundred amp, uh, the whole circuit box will be rebuilt to handle that increased electricity. That'll take one day for them to do that, uh, the electricity will be out for one day. I will try to schedule it on Thursday. We'll see. That's what we need, is another day where there's no electricity. So, when that happens, that'll be one day, then we start. And there'll be, uh, several phases in this, all of it will be disruptive, it will be changing, and the first is to install the heat pumps for the sanctuary. Our oldest and sickest heat, uh, gas furnace is the one that is heating this room right now. To replace it, we have to install two heat pumps. That's because of, of code, that is not because one heat pump couldn't do it, the code requires that given the volume of air that we have in this room. So we're installing two. We will install the first one to replace the gas furnace that's in the, in the, in the sexton's closet, and, uh, we'll install that and then using the current ducting. Most of that work will be in the sexton's closet and underneath the crawl space here. The people who are doing this, I really admire the work they do. They're down here in these crawl spaces in the dark with headlamps, doing all kinds of stuff. They're sealing up the, the ducting, they're insulating it, there's no insulation on it right now, they're not sealed. It is pretty sick. So they will do that, and they will get that one in, uh, and we'll also get us the smart thermostat for that, and I'll have more to say about the smart thermostats in a moment. The second heat pump for the sanctuary is going to, uh, the air handle will be put up here alongside the organ box, I think there's some technical term for the organ box, but it is going to be up.
I'm gonna give you two more minutes.
Okay. So, then we're going to replace the parish hall gas, like, that gas pump, uh, gas heater, and, uh, that, most of that work will be done under the parish hall. When it's done, it will be, in both, all these cases, when it's done, there's not gonna be any heat for a period of time. We'll be without heat. And then finally, we will do the, uh, heat pumps for the classroom wing, and, uh, at that point, we will have them all in. Now, on the smart thermostat, these smart thermostats measure carbon dioxide level, and when the carbon dioxide level gets too high, it's called hypercarby- carbion. It's going to protect us from hypercarbion and keep people from nodding off during a sermon.
Guaranteed.
Can, can you, if somebody wants to join Creation Care, can you let, can you let them know when, when we meet? And if they wanna join Creation Care, how would they go about joining our group?
Just let Daniel know, you can be a member just like that. There are no exclusions.
No applications.
When, when, when we are, when we have all these heat pumps in, and they're working, at that point, and at the beginning of this year, I did not think it was going to be possible, but we're going to be completely off of, uh, carbon-based fuel, except for a good portion of the electricity that we get off of the grid. And we will, for this facility, our facility, we will be close to having a zero-carbon footprint. It's amazing stuff.
Question, Wally told me, left a message, you wanted me to discuss the cost of the heat pumps?
I think somebody's going to talk about that.
We'll do that in a little bit, then.
Okay.
Okay. But the, Bob, the other thing Daniel asked, so the question, or, uh, sorry, Daniel's prompt was, when does Creation Care meet? You meet the-
Second, second Tuesday of each month.
On Zoom.
On Zoom.
On Zoom at six, six thirty.
Six thirty to eight.
Six thirty to eight, okay, all right.
It's very exciting meeting, too. Yes.
Any other questions? Uh, I think Betsy might have something to say, do you have any more to say, Betsy?
No.
No.
She already talked about the heat pump part.
I have a quick question, are we gonna be, ever be in a place where we're selling up, like, selling electricity back to PG&E? Producing enough?
Wait, 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 can I have Daniel please answer that question?
Yeah, so, right now, we, we are selling back, and, and when we sell back, we're only getting compensated at the wholesale rate, so the idea is that we need to start consuming that electricity in the parish, and we'll have a better return on our money.
Cool.
So, so Jenny's question was, do we ever sell the excess that we're currently generating to PG&E? The answer is yes, but we get the wholesale rate for it when we true up. So part of wanting to increase the amount of electricity we're using is we, we get more bang for our buck in that sense. Yes, Bob?
When we're using the heat pumps, uh, we'll probably be using all of the energy off of that.
Right, so Bob's comment was that when we get the, all the heat pumps in, we'll probably use all of the electricity we are generating, perhaps a bit more, so, okay. Rick and Daniel, pick your up.
The, the topic of the cost is kind of an interesting segue here. One of the things that I would say about this project, getting to truly zero, you can stop burning fossil fuels here by having electricity, but that's not going to solve the problem, because the power plant feels landing from its natural gas, so you're shifting it from one point to the other. What we are truly doing here is ending the use of fossil fuels in, in this, in this campus. Well, seems like we've done this before.
We have done this before.
Dan and I are gonna talk a little bit about, uh, financial update, uh, Dan has numbers through September to, to talk to us about, and then, we're gonna kind of talk about the hundred thousand foot level of where we are, and where we're going here with the dollars and cents.
So, um, I summarized through, uh, the end of September, and you can tell how accurate this is because of my spelling of endowment. Anyway, so I thought this would be, I mean, I put them in categories rather than giving you something like this. I put them in, so we put all income in one, one thing, it just said that this is a budgeted amount, you know, how much we are actually at. So we should, in percent of budget, so that percent of budget, we should be at seventy-five percent if we're at three-quarters through the year. We are three-quarters through the year at the end of September, and so you can kind of gauge where the numbers are. And for expenses, we just divided all the clergy expenses and all the assessment insurance in one category, that's like, um, the church and serfs that we pay, and then staff expenses, um, and then facilities, which means things like the utility bill, and the office supplies, and things like that. And then our outreach programs, and then the programs, um, that we run would be things like, um-
Sunday School.
Yeah, 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 Sunday School and that kind of thing. So, just broad categories. And most of the things you see are pretty close to about seventy-five percent, um, overall, and overall expenses are seventy-two. We usually do the outreach payments at the end of the year, so that's where we might, we've not seen anything there yet. And, so that's, um, that's where we're at. We're just a little above a budgeted, uh, in, income, and then we're a little below budgeted expenses, and so we're not at the point where we, at the end of the year yet. So we did budget for twenty-four thousand plus deficit, and so, um, we are about halfway, half of that right now, that's, that's where we are now. And so we are expecting some more expenses. I guess, as I say, if you budget for a deficit, and you get a deficit, we're right at, you know, we can't do this forever, right?
But, but do we have, are we minus eleven thousand in the bank, Dan? No. Like, so we have a different balance in the account, which is because why?
It's a quiz.
It's a quiz for the treasurer.
Well, we have a different balance, I mean-
Well, the deficit is not going to be, you're not on the draw.
No, 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 no.
No, because we have a, we have a, because we have a surplus, we have a surplus, right?
That's what I was getting at.
Right, but I'm just saying, we are, we are minus eleven thousand seven hundred from where we were at the beginning of the year.
Right.
But we are much higher than, we have plenty of, plenty of money in the account because of the surplus from the, a couple years before. So, um, we're not in- So we're not in danger of doing that. We haven't had to, you know, move things from savings to pay for bills. And we haven't, you know, we're not overdrawn anymore. We're not really close to it yet. I know the history of this church before, like when I first came here, there was that issue of, I don't know, right? Remember that? It's like, are we gonna have enough money to pay for the bills? So we're not even close to that. But we can't continue to do this indefinitely. And again, expect to be okay. I gave you the account balances there at the, at the end of September. And it shows that we're, we're doing pretty well. We have a little reserve.
A couple of things. Again, from, from the big picture though, think back to twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two especially. Twenty twenty-one was a COVID year. And the building was, and so was twenty twenty. The building was partly shut down. But the generosity of this parish, I shouldn't be amazed, but I am. People stepped up. And that, and that with not, you know, having services here and all of that, we ran some pretty big surpluses those two years. Now, twenty twenty-two comes along. What was the big thing in the economy that everybody got faced with? It was the ugly face of inflation, which is the most regressive tax on all of us that you will ever see. Everything costs more. I think the national inflation average was something, it was close to nine percent in that, in that year. It was just under double digits. There were some months that it was way, way, way over. The Dyson recommendation for payroll increase for twenty twenty-two, no, for twenty twenty-three was eight point seven percent. And the vestry felt that we had to do at least five. And what that amounted to was about two and a half years of normal increases in pay. We didn't come up with the whole amount that everybody suffered with, but we came up with a pretty good chunk of it. We're faced with that again. And just because the rate of inflation is coming down, does not mean that prices are coming down. It means that the rate of increase is coming down. We are stuck with these prices forever now. So that means that revenue's gotta go up. We, we talked, Mo, Sarah and Dan and I met to do an initial stab at the budget like ten days ago or something like that. Still refining that. But we looked at a budget increase for payroll of five point eight, which I think was the, that was the Dyson recommendation. And it's probably gonna be closer to two. But that's a vestry decision. We both get to say a lay on that one. But the cost of everything is going up. And the church has been very frugal with, with, with all of your money. But still, the revenue side's gotta come up too. And, you know, so come stewardship, you're gonna get asked to dig deep. There's no other way to say that. The question, I guess it was Wally asked the question about the cost of the heat pump system. And it's, it's substantial. It's, it's a medium five-figure figure that we're going through now. There are a number of options that are being considered to pay for this. We have requests that are going to be used. Redwood Coast Energy has a financing program. And, you know, before I hear a big gasp about the church indebtedness itself, this is a zero-interest program. You're only paying back the principal. And, you know, having worked in the finance world for thirty-five years, you should take all the zero-interest money you can get. You're transferring that, that cost to somebody else. But nevertheless, we will have to pay this back. And it's a significant amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, and just I'm looking, I have the breakdown for the facilities. And utilities are out, I mean, we didn't, we planned for a lot less spending on utilities because of the electric power. But the gas prices went so high up that we are, we are at a hundred and twenty-one percent of utility spending already.
We spent thirty-six hundred dollars in the last twelve months for natural gas fees. Yes, really.
Most of that money is going to taxes.
Going what?
To taxes.
Yeah, to tax the entire energy. Yeah, that, that's a, that's a really good deal there.
So putting the heat pump in, of course, will greatly reduce that. And so.
And does not transfer it to somebody else. I think we are, it is truly zero. Or we'll.
Right, and so we are kind of paying ourselves in that way by, by taking our small money to it.
Bob mentioned the PG&E and their bureaucracy and getting us approved for a four hundred amp panel, which is not that big a deal. But they move glacially slow. And the more delay we have, the more delay we get off the natural gas diet that we're on. But we also, you know, get to, get to zero. But the thing is, it delays this zero-interest loan. And you apply for this loan, it gets approved. If you don't get it done within a certain amount of time, then you gotta do it over again. So, you know, giddy up PG&E. But yes, there are things coming that, you know, the budget will likely show another, I'm just gonna tell you now, the budget for twenty twenty-four will show another deficit. Because we're still digesting this huge increase in costs that we have that all of us face every day.
Can I have a question? So the budget, the deficit right now is like almost twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So are we anticipating that we're gonna have less of a deficit by the end of the year than we had anticipated? Or are there other expenses coming?
Tell me how cold it's gonna be in the rest of the year. How much natural gas we gotta burn. But, but, I mean, the salaries are fixed. The other expenses are relatively, about eighty-five percent of the outflow pie for this parish is HR. So we already know, so that one's, that one's built in. Natural gas could be an issue. There are other minor things that might come up. And also, the end of the year, you have Christmas coming. And people are very generous at Christmas time. So the revenue side could be impacted as well. I think that it will do better, it will do better than the twenty-four thousand that we have projected. But that's a guess. That is a guess.
And a per.
Who's that?
So anyway, any other questions? Okay.
Oh.
Yeah.
I just wanted to remind you that we are applying for grants for the heat pumps. But we, you know, that's.
Thank you, I'd be glad to mention.
But we've been very lucky so far.
The, a lot of the construction and everything else that's going to improve, what's going around with the church are done with insurance money and requests and grants and, again, zero-interest loan possibility as well.
The interesting part of the insurance, the floor and the fence and all of that were claims made because of the wet winter we had and damage done to that. And the insurance company paid for this.
Bad side is?
The bad side is the premiums are going down. So.
So that's kind of an unknown for the future. How much is the insurance gonna go up? Couple of other things too, that we just, we can't know. The utility bill will depend on how soon we get the heat pump in. And do we have to actually buy some money? We'll cover all, all of our heating.
We put a plug in the budget for, for energy of a thousand dollars for next year, assuming that we can't get this done, you know, by the first part of the year. But it would, you know, but that's a third of what it is. And the, and the wintertime is, is the big demand for heat, obviously, here. So if we go over that, you know, all bets are off.
I wanted to just emphasize what Betsy said. The grants are very promising. In fact, the heat pumps for the office wing were paid completely from a grant from Redwood Coast Energy Authority. All eighty-five hundred dollars was, we didn't pay a dime for that, other than some electrical.
Any other questions about finances? I mean, we're kind of.
No.
Getting this. Pretty much. Anyway.
I will run it through you.
So are we gonna? Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Is this on? Thank you, guys. All right, friends, just a few more things. And I know folks are anticipating lunch. We'll get there momentarily. So a little pop quiz about last year's budget, though. There were some very specific things that pushed us much more into a budget deficit than we've had before. One of you, one of those was already named, and that was a five percent quota for staff last year. But what were the other things? And I should have prizes for you. Right?
Yeah.
Dad, no, Dan, Kevin, Cindy.
We hired our church secretary.
Right, so we made, there are two things about the parish secretary or parish administrator position. She went from twelve to sixteen hours a week. And the second is we hired her through Express. So we paid twenty-six dollars an hour for that privilege of doing it. And there were, there were good reasons for doing it that way. But we've only recently made Jen our employee so that we're actually paying her closer to what she actually makes on the related expenses. So there were two things about the parish administrator. And there's another thing that has to do with me. Ricky?
Oh, oh, maybe, okay, maybe I have a different one. That we're outsourcing the payroll processing.
Yeah, we, correct, we are outsourcing payroll. That is a smaller one. Elena?
We decided we needed health insurance.
You decided, well, well, yeah, so that we're. So it's not that you needed health insurance, that you went from paying, just reimbursing for what Aaron's, the cost of Aaron's health insurance, to paying full freight for me, right? That added about six thousand dollars right there. You're working. We'll thank, we'll thank you. But, but, and, but to, to Rick's point, like, none of that goes away, right? I mean, but yes, the cost for Jen is coming down, but everything else remains, right? Okay. So, so I would have to, a couple of things I want to comment on. And then we're gonna sing and head out for lunch. The first is just for people to have on their radar, that it is my intention to take a sabbatical next summer. It will be five years since my last one. I anticipate that being during the summer months. And I only at this point have some very general ideas about what that will look like. I suspect there will be a trip to South America. So then I can join up with Mary, where she can show me around, right? The other thing, and I'm in the very early stages of exploring this. And it will really depend on a couple of things in terms of getting my act together in terms of an application. But I'm looking into Doctor of Ministry programs. I'm looking at the one at Duke. And I'm looking at Virginia Theological Seminary in Alexandria, Virginia. And what is different about, there's so, in the academic world, there's for different levels of things. There's a, there's a Doctor of Theology, which is a more sort of purely academic track for folks who are gonna be teaching and da-da-da-da-da. A D men, a Doctor of Ministry is for people who are actively in the work of ministry in a congregational or some other kind of setting. And so what, part of the way that's different, yes, there's an academic component to it. But all of the coursework is meant to directly relate back to the congregation to benefit the congregation. That means y'all get to be my guinea pigs for. Yeah. Now, the thing I'm running into is like, they want, they want a piece of my writing. And I'm like, uh, it's been twenty years since I did the academic writing.
So you just record your sermon and then like?
Or they want like, they want like academic, what's the word we're likely for? Recommendations. And I'm like, right? Like, all of the folks, most, many of the folks who were my instructors and professors back in the day have retired, so on and so forth. But we'll figure that out. I cannot be the only one who has, has those challenges. But anyway, so that process is unfolding and I will keep you updated. And my guess is that if I actually get the applications done and am admitted, that some of that time will need some time for me back in North Carolina or Virginia to do the in-portion parts of things. The way they're set up primarily is that you go back, you have a week or two with your cohort, and then you have an online class for the semester. And then in the next semester, you go back for a period of time with your cohort. And the class itself is, the courses themselves are online. I will let you know about that as that progresses. But those are a couple of things that I think are on the docket for a sabbatical. Okay, Daniel said five dollars for the password. I was gonna say, don't, Daniel, let anybody know that that's here. Because if I see you on your phone during service, I'm gonna put a man on you and take it back. All right. I wanna say a couple of things about our music ministry. So our dear Susan had a stroke in late August. It was right before Cindy came back from sabbatical. And many of you have been in communication with her. She's home, she's doing well. She did recover the capacity to play the piano, for which she is deeply thankful. You know how meaningful that is to her. But not at a capacity where she felt she could return to play for us. Okay? So, so a couple of things to note. Between Nan and I and other folks, we have a plan through December. And most Sundays for the later service, Nan will be playing. There will be occasions like this morning where Doug Morehead is, is filling in when he's able. And there are gonna be some Sundays where neither Doug nor Nan is available. And so we're gonna use those as some times to do a little experimentation for the later service. So we'll probably do a little bit less music than we normally would. Holly over here is gonna be brave and helping us on some of the hymns. We're probably gonna do some more a cappella and just use that as a time to do some experimentation with things that we maybe don't do so often. And in that period of time, as we're working through all of that, begin to sort of figure out what are we doing come the new year in terms of a staff position. I wanna say a couple of things about that. And I, about twenty of you were here last Sunday when we did our fully conversation about music and the life of the congregation. And what was clear is that music is really important to folks, right? It's really important for, for lots of different reasons. But one of the things I've said to you is that I think it is unlikely that we're gonna hire an organist again. That there are few of those folks locally and that most of them are retired or near retirement. So what will happen is we will have organ, but it will be like today and other times when one of those local folks is able to come and support us in, in those ways. But the bench is not very deep in terms of our local folks. And they may get into HLL that, okay? So just know that. Doesn't mean we're not gonna ever have organ, but it will be different than having somebody who is doing the organ full-time.
Or maybe you have your grandkids take organ lessons.
Or maybe have your grandkids take organ lessons. Thank you, Nan. But I do think that is true going in the near term. The other thing I think I want to say is that a couple of things came out of the feedback from last week about what was important to you about music or what we'd like to see going forward. And one of them was about doing different kinds of music. Folks expressed interest around gospel music, around a cappella, around a number of different things. So that will be part of what we take into consideration in terms of looking at staffing. The other thing is folks noted that they'd like when there are a variety of guest musicians. And we have very talented folks in the congregation. And we know talented folks in the larger community. And the thing I said to the folks last week, and I'll say again this morning, is that yes, and there has to be somebody who organizes that. And that was actually specifically one of Susan's roles, was to invite and supervise our guest musicians, right? It's not as simple as, hey, Jen, you wanna play next week? There are a few steps between that invite and the person actually playing that has to happen. So I am hearing that. And that will be, again, a piece of, for consideration as we look at how we're gonna staff that, that and make music happen in the congregation. Music is going to happen. Lots of music, lots of very good music. But, but it will look different in all likelihood than it has for the almost ten years that Susan has been our organist. And I wanna say two more things about this. One is Jenny, I think, noted that when Susan is played for us of late, she often will do like a, a, a simple tazei piece or something during communion. She just plays it and people who know it can kind of join in. And it's very quiet and contemplative and lovely. I'm gonna say something for Susan and also for Nan. When folks do something like that that you appreciate, tell them. Tell them. When the choir knocks it out of the ballpark like. When the choir knocks it out of the ballpark like they did two Sundays ago, tell them and tell Nan, please. She often does not get the accolades for like, wow.
No one ever says the choir was good to me, just so you know, you all say it to everyone. Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome, Nan. So, um, so when you notice that, with any of us really, but, but with, with Susan, with Nan, to let them know that. And the final thing on all of this, of course, is that, um, Susan will be with us on Sunday, October twenty-ninth. She'll be with us at the later service, we have lots of music planned, Doug is gonna be here again. And then afterwards, we will have, um, a party and some time to celebrate and thank Susan for her, her ministry with us and to tell her things like, we love you, we do that, so. Are there any more questions before we continue? Carolyn?
I have a question. I know that organs are, are a different animal and need to be cared for.
Right.
In the event, you know, that we're not playing it all the time. Is there any, at, you know, ongoing maintenance that we need to be taking, taking care of?
Right, so that has been one of the other responsibilities of our organist, has been the care of the, uh, both the organ and the piano. And so one of the things that Susan has always done has been to schedule the tuning and maintenance of both of those instruments. So I don't think we're in a gap at the moment about that. But yeah, that has been one of the responsibilities of that person is to, to make sure that there's regular maintenance for those instruments. Yep. Great, great question, Carolyn. Anybody else? Is anybody texting you, Nancy? No, not a question, okay.
I haven't heard from Wally.
Um, all right. So in a moment, I'm gonna invite you to stand, we will say the blessing, we will sing the docology. I'm gonna go to the back and if you have a card that you've written something on, I'm gonna take it from you on the way out. Um, and then we'll go in and are we ready in here, you think?
I have one announcement to make. You will see a bucket with food waste or food waste and compost that's next to the, you know, I mean, it's like a little bussing tray for your dirty dishes and such. Next to it is a bucket, please don't throw your silverware in it accidentally. But please use it because it makes it a lot easier for people to clean up, not have to quite clean up so much, our dirty dishes. And then I will take that compost if anyone wants it. Unless someone truly wants it this weekend, but I'll take care of it, but please use it.
Wasn't there some kind of a fee, I thought?
Well, there is a suggest, uh, that, yes, there's a request for a suggested donation of five dollars, Carolyn. And there's, I think there's a basket, basket set out for that.
Oh, okay.
For the meal?
For the meal, for the meal.
Are we supposed to write something else on our cards inside that one, or something?
Only if there was something that occurred to you, Betsy. Okay.
I admire the job that you have done as manager of this large project we have.
Well, I am thankful to all of you, we have gifted, talented, committed people here. We want to see that purpose go forward and for that, I'm really thankful. Please stand as you are able. Cindy? Yes. Will you watch us for the docology?
Praise God from whom all blessings flow. Praise God, our preacher, still be low. Praise God above the heavenly host. Praise Father, Son, and Holy Ghost.
Most gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for this church family, for the food we are about to enjoy, for those who have prepared. Bless it to our bodies and us to your service and keep us mindful of the needs of others and help us, Lord, to know how to respond to those needs. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.